One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So again, good evening. In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access channel on Facebook Live on the public access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube after the meeting. The agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at the meeting and are those reasonably anticipated by the chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. I'd like to begin tonight with public comments from the board.
I have none.
None.
I have none as well.
All right. And, town manager?
None.
Any public comments this evening from the public? And seeing none. Announcements. So I'll start with a couple. So we have an invitation from the North Central Massachusetts Chamber of Commerce. Every year they have a legislative and candidates reception, and this is for elected officials, and this year it will be held at the same place as last year, the Chalkset Inn in Sterling, and the date is Thursday, September 22, 2022. So that's this, not this Thursday, that's Thursday in September, the 22nd, and it's from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. I attended last year, and it really is a great opportunity to meet the different candidates who are running for office statewide, and also a good opportunity to really just kind of rub elbows with fellow colleagues in other communities. I'd also like to announce that last week during our action items, we noted some concerns about the school bus policy. On behalf of the board, I attended the school committee meeting last Wednesday to relay to the school committee the concerns that were expressed by the board, as well as some other concerns. And the school committee will be holding a meeting tomorrow at 6:30 to address their busing policy. So all who are who've expressed concern about this, I encourage you to attend the meeting tomorrow. We'll be via Zoom, and again, that's at 6:30 tomorrow evening. Also, and this is more of a kind of a personal thing, it's probably a public comment slash announcement. So MSPCA has taken possession of about 100 goats and emu and an emu, and so anyone looking to establish some goats, you can go to MSPCA.org/goats. And again, there's about 100 that need to get rehomed, so if anyone is available and interested, I encourage that. Any additional announcements?
About the emu, sure.
And an emu, yeah, and the emu. Just be advised that some of the goats, typically when they're taken from homes, they usually have disease or other issues. But again, if you're interested in this, MSPCA.org/goats. Do we have any other announcements this evening?
Just I'll do upfront, the special town meeting warrant is open until September 20th at 5:00 p.m. for submission of articles, and the special town meeting is November 15th at 7:00 p.m. at the middle school, high school auditorium.
Thank you. Any other announcements from the board this evening? Communication from other boards. The only communication I'll reference tonight is I've been in communication with the chair of the finance committee. We're looking to have a joint meeting with them on the 20th of September for them to discuss some of, I believe they like to talk about some debt capacity for the town. I've also encouraged them to opine, if they have any, on our financial policies that we reviewed recently, and that we will, I'm blanking on what the third item is, and then there will be an additional discussion on ARPA funding at a later date. So that will happen on the 20th. This evening, we have some appointments. I am going to take some of these out of order tonight. So I want to kind of skip and go straight to interviews, appointments, reappointments, resignations with regard to the ratification, the town manager's appointment of the facilities director, Paul Visconti. So to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So not to downplay other appointments, but I'm very excited about tonight's appointment of the facilities director, a brand-new position that was created as part of a reorganization plan through the town charter process, approved at town meeting, and we went forward with the posting in July, received 55 applications. Out of those 55 applications, the assistant town manager and I chose five, our top five choices, and three were, three accepted interviews. The candidate that I have appointed and I'm asking the board to ratify tonight is Paul Visconti. Mr. Visconti has his Bachelor's of Science in Construction Administration from Johnson &amp; Wales, has 20 years of progressive management experience, both in private and public sectors. He was the Director of Development and Operational Services in Pillsbury Internal Corporation for 13 years, worked for the Commonwealth Massachusetts Department of Corrections for 12 years as their Director of Security and Operations, and then as the Director of Facilities Operations, and his last position was with Medway Public Schools as their Director of Facilities and Public Offices. Mr. Visconti has overseen budgets as large as 10.5 million and has years of experience overseeing operations, maintenance, repair, and capital planning for facilities. He also, his skill set also includes project management, budgeting, and great communication skills. Additionally, in his last role in Medway, he ran the Parks and Recs Department as part of that role, so along with those employees reporting to him. So that's an added bonus for this position because it's both facilities and grounds. His references described him as reliable, easy to get along with, ambitious, and then he gets things done. Mr. Visconti's years as experienced as a facilities director and his long-range planning skills and everything he brings to the table is why I'm recommending him tonight to be ratified as the next facilities director.
Thank you for that really glowing recommendation, town manager. If I can ask Mr. Paul Visconti to come join us here tonight, and if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself and saying a couple of words, just so we can get a little more familiar with who you are.
Good evening, everyone. I appreciate you inviting me here tonight. As Ms. Lamro, the town manager, said, my name is Paul Visconti. I'm from Pillsbury, Massachusetts. I haven't had many jobs in the past 25 years. I have a progressive management style. Most recently, I worked for Medway School District in conjunction with the DPW, running the town facilities as well as the school buildings, facilities. In my last role, most recently, previous to that, I worked for Department of Correction, Executive Office of Public Safety. I had various roles within the system, from safety and security to facilities director and operations of all maintenance facilities, worked in conjunction with DRM, DCAM, several large projects. I sat on the COMBIES board for the prime grocer contract for the last previous years from 2014 to 2017, worked with several state agencies and outside stakeholders, and prior to that, I worked obviously in the private sector for multinational companies, basically doing facilities management, operations, and staff training. I'm proud to say that I've worked with both unionized and non-unionized workforce. I've been successful working with both, both private sector and non-private sector entities and sort of getting everybody to work together, and pride myself on trying to be the straw that stirs the drink and move initiatives forward. I'm glad to hear that my references did say that about me. It means a lot to me what my colleagues and peers and of course, my superiors say. One thing that I've always taken from every position that I've had, really try to treat what I'm doing as if it's my own, you know? So when I'm spending money or looking for resources, it's not always the quickest resource, it's not always the least expensive. Sometimes it is, but it's really what's going to be best, not only for the town, but for the building and the sustainability of it going forward in the future, and how that's going to make everything sort of prosper and developing staff.
Thank you. I want to open up to the board for any comments or questions that they have for you. I will note that we are a five-member board. Heather Sroka is not with us tonight. Unfortunately, she's, well, unfortunately, she's on vacation with her family. So we can start with any questions that we have for Paul or comments.
I don't have any comments after the glowing recommendation of the town manager. Welcome to Lunenburg, and thank you for applying, and I look forward to getting in the future.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
I have no questions either, and I'll echo precisely what Mr. Dwyer said, so thank you.
Thank you.
So obviously incredibly experienced and everything, so couldn't ask for more. I do have one question, and that's just a personal opinion question from you, since this is kind of a new position for us. We've had somebody fill the role, but it was really not, not the overarching umbrella role that we're looking for you to fill when we, the town manager indicated with the organizational change. So from your experience in, in Medway, because that's your most recent municipal experience, what, what were the challenges you faced there, and what are like some of the things that we should expect as you address? I mean, really, you're not even on the job yet, but, but just one of the things, that's why I'm asking previous experience, like what are the things that happened? I mean, obviously, you've worked in both private and public sector, but they're vastly different.
Yes.
So I'm asking you, from your experience in both, the municipal one being the most recent, what is your take on what the challenges were there? How many years were you in that job, by the way?
I wasn't there very long at all. I was there for a total of about four months.
Ah, okay.
And I think that it's an excellent question, and to your point, I found one of the most challenging things, and I think some of the most challenging things, is really pulling other municipality, whether you want to call them assets, or getting a group collaboration sort of between the town entities, sort of state entities, and working with private sector vendors, and sort of pulling everything all together. And I like to look at it like how you're going to cut the apple up, right? So DPW responsibilities, Parks and Recs responsibilities, buildings responsibilities. How does that all get allocated? Who is ultimately responsible? How does the information come in? Because I found that usually to tackle these problems that come up, they're usually not very complex problems. What I found is the lack of reporting and having sort of a key person to be the reporting structure, and then the facilitation of the work, and then how to follow up and circle back to make sure that that work gets distributed or allocated to the proper vendor, and then getting them in there in a timely fashion. And that was sort of the biggest challenge for me, because my position was relatively, there's been a lot of turnover for whatever reason with that position, sort of getting everybody on the same page and saying, hey, I want to be the point person and have the ownership of this. Contact me, I'll make sure that it gets carried down to the proper person. We'll come up with a plan as to how we're going to attack the problem. And then working the financing, and with that, with the allocations of funds and whose budget it comes out of is always a tricky thing with municipality, of course. And then getting the proper vendor in to do it in a timely fashion, because, you know, depending on the scope of work, you might have to get three quotes, it might have to be a bid, it might have to be a sealed bid, depending if it's a non-emergent matter and how we're going to go about doing that. So I think that was one of the biggest challenges. And then, of course, you know, one of the things I think is very important, anytime you start a new job or going anywhere, is really getting to know who the key people are and the role that you're, that you have a new role, but you need to know the key people that have been doing that job and have been in that municipality for a long time. And that's sort of going to be one of my things right off the bat, just really getting to know everybody, seeing who the go-to people are, and finding out how business is done, so you can be successful in the role.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I look forward to working with you and getting to know you better and you as you settle in, which it sounds like you will be soon.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Well, as I said to you before the meeting started, I am so excited that you're with us tonight. This really is, I think, you know, the result of many years of us identifying a need, creating, working with, you know, the town manager, really taking the lead and identifying how we can structurally change and reorganize ourselves to better meet the needs of our facilities, and then, you know, crafting this before the town, presenting it to several different boards to help us arrive at this point. It provides you with a wonderful opportunity, and I am, you know, I'm over here gushing, I am so happy that you are here before us. So outside of you, I'm sure the town manager has told you that I manage property for a living, that I'm a asset manager, vice president of asset management. Hearing you talk, you know exactly what you're talking about. You are clearly someone who's also in the industry, very well qualified to take on this responsibility, and I am just thrilled and excited that you are here with us tonight, and look forward to the work that you, that you will do for us as a community. I think one of the positives I will, I will highlight is I think that Heather, the town manager's management style, is that she really does afford department heads a lot of autonomy, and being able to be the kings of their kingdom, so to speak. And I don't mean that quite literally, because I think the town manager has a lot of direct oversight over exactly what happens, but I mean that in the way that as a subject matter expert, I think Heather does a great job of being able to tap into those resources, make sure that you're comfortable, confident, that you have a lot of, that you will have a lot of control over your area, and it really is a collaborative environment. So I think that for, for you, I think what you'll find is that, you know, it's a great team that you'll be working with, with Heather, with the other department heads that we have, which really I know is going to be important, as you said, you know, that management across sectors is really important, working with other department heads. So I'm really excited to have you on board. So thank you for being with us tonight.
Thank you so much. I sincerely appreciate it. I look forward to a long career with the town, and I'm like over the moon to be here, honestly. Thank you so much.
We apologize for the chair being so ambivalent about your appointment.
Thank you all so much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions tonight, I will entertain a motion to appoint, to ratify the town manager's appointment of Paul Visconti to be the Lunenburg Facilities Director.
I move to ratify the town manager's appointment of Paul Visconti to the position of facilities director.
Second.
All right. Any other, any additional discussion on this motion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. The ayes have it. Congratulations.
And when, to the town manager, when will be Mr. Visconti's starting?
Tomorrow.
No. Next Wednesday.
Yes, next Wednesday.
We look forward to having you on board, and I'm sure we'll all reach out. I'll try to give you at least a good few weeks here before I come meet with you, but we look forward to having you on board.
Thank you. It's my pleasure. I really do appreciate it. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we are almost on time now for our 7:15 appointment with the Council of Aging, and so this is going to be with Director Sue, Sue Doherty, and then also we have a Council of Aging representative here tonight. Looks like Jane Rabbit will be with us as well. Sue.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. I'm Sue Doherty. I'm the director at the Lunenburg Council on Aging. This is Jane Rabbit. She's the vice chairperson of the Council on Aging. So every year, we like to come up and make a report on what went on in the prior fiscal year, and, okay, it's up on the PowerPoint. That's good. So here's our FY22 report. I think you all got this. You can see it on your laptops.
Yep, we can see it behind you too.
Yep, okay. So anyways, we are back in business after a long COVID winter, and winter, and winter, and summer, and whatnot. And, and that shows by looking at the first page of Back in Business, up in the right-hand corner, and if, this last fiscal year, we had 758 persons that came through our door, and we helped in different ways compared to FY21, where there were 601 persons served. I did the FY22 recreation stats, compared them once again with the prior fiscal year, and so we'll start with the FY22 stats. And if you look down the bottom, to the right with the little arrow, we had 532 people come in for different things, such as lunch, cultural programs, fitness and exercise programs, health benefit counseling, health screenings, et cetera, et cetera. And those 532 people came in a total of 7,203 times during the year. Compared to FY21, if you just look at the stats again, we had 228 come through the door. So there's a big difference there, and of course, that's COVID-driven, 3,621 times to different, to different things. And I think that the big, one of the big things to look at here is in congregate meals. We have started cooking our own meals at the senior center now. We have a Tuesday lunch, we have a Wednesday brunch, and we have a Thursday lunch, a soup and salad bar, which is a big success. And you can see the number on there. In FY22, we had 172 people come up for lunch, 1,731 times. And in FY21, we had three, three times, because we are now cooking our own meals, and actually, we are in the process of hiring a meal site manager who will be doing home cooking. So town hall, come down for lunch, you know? It's a big, big difference. And people, they really, they really enjoy coming up there for lunch and having a home-cooked meal. So we're really happy about that. That's one of the highlights of our year this year. As far as transportation, that doesn't change too much. We had in FY22, 55 people ride the van, and then in FY21, which of course, we were still in COVID, there was 40 people. And it's, you know, you have to go to the doctor's appointment and whatnot, and that really doesn't change too, too much. But the number of rides definitely changed. So, and then we go to the congregate meal stats again. FY22, unduplicated stats, 172, which I already pointed out, and three compared to the year before. Meals on Wheels stats, that's another one that, you know, you really don't want to see meals on, people on Meals on Wheels, because that means that they're doing good and they don't need the help. We have 57 people on it last year. We served them 6,370 meals. In FY21, there was 53. And once again, that doesn't really change too much either. It all depends on the health of the community and who's involved on the Meals on Wheels. We have, I think, two, four, six, eight, nine drivers, volunteers. They do get a mileage stipend, and that really helps out right now because of the gas prices and everything. Do we have any questions on any of those stats? I know sometimes it's hard to understand. This comes through my senior center, which gathers all these statistics for us, which is a great tool. So last fiscal year, we had 40 volunteers, and they gave 1,183.25 hours of their time for different things. Like I said, Meals on Wheels drivers, the Memory Cafe, program leaders could be anybody from a bingo caller to a cribbage coordinator, helping the kitchen, handyman by watering, and taking care of gardens. Friendly phone calls, we started last year instead of the friendly visitor, because it was still tough to get into people's houses. So we developed the friendly phone call. Discovery Center navigators, once again, COVID strikes again, it's tough to get people out to volunteer. Discovery Center is something new. We've had it for a couple of years, and it was kind, it's kind of stagnant because of COVID. We have three, what we call transition navigators, who are volunteers who research different nonprofits that need help for people who are recently retired and they still want to use their skills. Like, for instance, if you're a nurse, you could volunteer at the school, or if you were into outdoors, you could go to conservation and volunteer or anything like that. So we're still working on that, and it's good to know that we're not the only one in the state who is stagnant like that, and that Discovery Center and the person who runs it calls us his poster child, because we actually keep pushing at it, and we do different programs when he comes out from, I think it's Newton he comes out from. So anyways, we had a lot of, a lot of activity in FY22 compared to FY21 with the volunteer stats, and if you add that up to the minimum wage here, it saved the town this last fiscal year. I took my wrong glasses today, so I have to really get up close and personal with this.
You don't use mine?
Sure. No.
$16,861.
Thank you, thank you.
Thirty-two cents.
Anyways, so that's what the town would have paid these people in salaries, all these volunteers that we had last year. So we do love our volunteers, and we appreciate everything they do. Jane, actually, she's also on the Council on Aging Board, but she volunteers at our Memory Cafe, too. So we do appreciate that. Service stats, these can get tricky, too. Case management, and if you see on the bottom, that's ongoing client cases that outreach would deal with. And that's, that's just a one-person count, pretty much. So she had 18 clients in FY22, and she's followed them like 28 times. And in FY21, we had a little bit more, because of course, people were calling with different questions for the COVID and things like that, and needed a little extra help. There was 21, and then 33 times. Client finding also, that's a new person who walks in the door for the first time that's never, ever been there before, so we had 107 people last year, and the year before, we had 68. And once again, thank, thank you COVID for the low number on that one. Support services, that can be many different things. If you turn the page, because it's really hard to explain what exactly is in support services, I'm going to start with what comes to mind when you hear the word senior center. So, and that's going to lead right into support services. So these are actually things that people have said to us. One is, I'm not old enough to go there. Another, you know, others think it's a nursing home. People ask, how many residents do you have living there? One person legitimately said to me once, that's where people go to die. And I think she was in her 80s, and she said, I'm not old enough to go there. And they think we're an assisted living facility. But when I say, we talk about support services on the next slide, what we do A to Z, people don't realize exactly what we actually do there. There's many, many things, and I can't list them all on here. And my chair, one of the, one of the board members, Pete Lincoln, wanted me to go through many of these, because this is just like a description of the programs, and there's programs within those programs, and I just don't, I can't do it all. There's so much to go through. We have ex, you know, exercise programs, application assistance. We have an in-house health insurance counselor, which is huge. There's health clinics, there's information and referral services for families that don't know what to do with a parent if they're elderly and they feel like they need help. We work with the schools, with intergenerational programs, with community service students. We work closely with the Lunenburg Police and Fire Departments. Lunenburg Police Department started a snow removal program with Officer Thibodeau, had a, his own snow blower, and we, I gave him information, we gave him information on the most frail ones that couldn't get out or needed their driveways done, and he would go there and snow blow their driveways. And then, of course, the fire department with the sand for seniors. Buckets of sand for those who cannot lift these five-gallon buckets of sand would go to their houses with a bucket of sand, and while there, check the smoke detectors, too. And I didn't add that into the, into this either, smoke detectors. We do wellness checks, the Memory Cafe, movies, we give away vegetables, we do pickleball, we do exercise, we do floral arrangement with Lunenburg Flower and Gifts, farmers' market coupons, cultural programs. We had Ted Reinstein come up, we've had Gordon Eads come up, we've had the Red Sox trophy there, World Series trophy. So as you can see, support services, we do so much, and I just can't even begin to just put it there. You'll never be able to read the font, even with bigger glasses. You wouldn't be able to do it. So when I say what comes to mind when you hear the word senior center, there's a big movement going on around the country right now, and it's taking the word senior out of senior center. And I know that Lou, you've spoken about this. I know the bus will not go to the heavy metal concerts, but...
I did actually present that to, I presented that to a small focus group, and they were like Judas Priest.
Yeah. I thought that was pretty funny, actually. So what we're doing is, at the last Council on Aging meeting, we're, they were tasked with some homework of coming up with different names to change, to take the word senior out of senior center. So there's things like Lunenburg Adult Activity Center, Lunenburg 50-plus Activity Center. There's different logos. Don't worry, Lou, we're safe with not stealing these logos. So, but we like, we also like the, the little hashtag underneath, live active, live well, because we are open to people 50-plus. I mean, we don't card people at the door. People can come in and, you know, take part in the programs, but we really want to try and show you what it actually happens at the senior center, and that is one of the goals of the Council on Aging this year. Do you want to speak on that?
Well, I just wanted to add back on what we do A to Z. Well, well, I just wanted to add back on what we do A to Z, that, um, you had mentioned the floral arrangement class, which is very popular. And then the other thing, you know, for younger people or older people, Tai Chi, tap, tap dancing. Um, what was the other one I was looking at?
Zumba.
Right, oh, zumba, yes. That's another one that's, uh, very active. So there's pickleball, obviously. Um, and there's just something there for everybody and that's what we need to promote, so.
Exactly, exactly. I mean, it's not just bingo anymore. Um, we have many other things going on there, too. And there's a good group of cribbage players, if you like to play cards, pitch. We have a pool table, which has become very popular. They want another pool table. And I, you know, I might have to put it outside on the new patio because we just don't have the room. Um, the men's group has become big. Where on Friday afternoons and Tuesday afternoons, they have to split their time on it because there's so many in there trying to play. And the ladies group is in there on Thursdays and Tuesday mornings, too. And they've been with us for quite a while. And like I said, they want another pool table, but sorry. So that's just some examples of like some of the logos and how it would look to freshen it up a little bit, to not, you know, not look like the Bingo Piler and things like that. And, um, any questions on any of that?
Would you like to open to the board with any questions or comments?
I was going to suggest if the board has any ideas for a name, you know, just let us know. Lou.
All right, any questions, comments from the board?
Uh, my only comment is just to, to Sue, thank you for all that you do for the Senior Center and the, in the town. And, uh, the entire board for the Council on Aging. You guys put in a lot of effort and it, it's very much appreciated.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate that. And we appreciate, um, all the support that we get from the town manager and Michael. He's a great advocate for the elders also. And, um, you know, I see other communities where we get together to talk as directors. And like I was saying earlier, some of them, they meet in the attic of the town hall and there's just an office. Some of them, they're probably not even open still from COVID. And we have been so lucky. We've been supported through everything through the years and we really appreciate that. Um, and just to end this, um, I want to dedicate this report to Sarah Grant. She was a Council on Aging Board member who passed away this past winter. And she every year ran a tea party there. I mean, a real legit tea party. And do you want to talk about the tea party a little bit?
Uh, she, she was into such detail about how, you know, how a tea party needs to be run. And different members who also belong to the Laurelwood Garden Club, um, would do tablescapes. And so there'd be a theme. And if you're around, and I forget when the, when it is, but...
It's in October.
Yeah, you need to go and, and just peek in and see what the quality of, you know, and then we all make different foods, you know, finger foods and, uh, and we have, we can have a raffle, I guess. I don't know.
Well, they're, they're having a mercantile, so they'll be selling different things.
Yeah.
Um, you know.
But she was the one that really, you know, started at Laurelwood and then, you know, she was on Council on Aging. So, you know, we kind of recruited her.
She also led craft classes. She was very talented. Um, and with that tea party last year, she raised over $3,000 for the Senior Center. So that was really something. And we will miss her.
Yes, yes, we will.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Oh, you know, to echo what Mr. Dwyer said about all the work you put in. I remember many years ago, I was canvassing with a, a, a state representative candidate. We went door to door and it was outside, a lot of it was outside of Lunenburg, uh, in, in Lancaster and, and Air, I think, part of it, and Shirley. And one of the things that came up, especially when we knocked on the doors of, of seniors or adults now, was the fact that they opined the fact that they, their town didn't have a Senior Center at all either. Either they didn't have one at all or it wasn't nearly, uh, chock full of the activities of the Lunenburg one, which was really looked up to in all of those other towns. And I remember that struck me then. And it strikes me now because every year that you come before us to do your report, I see the numbers and I see the activities and the activity list keeps growing and the, and the people who attend keep growing and the, the, the number of times, you know, the, the non, or the unduplicated ones, those numbers keep growing. And it really is just a testament to the, the work that you and your staff and the, and the Council on Aging put into this, that it really made it a gem of the town for the region. And I really applaud all of the things that you do there. There's never a time that I go there, an event that I go to there, that people aren't smiling and so happy about that they had this available for them for, for the activities, for the camaraderie and for everything. And it really is a special, a special, uh, center and special item in this town because of all the work and the volunteers also that work there. So thank you for all of that.
Thank you for that. That's, that's really humbling. Thank you very much.
So I, I want to also just comment, you know, the work that you guys are doing. And I tell you this enough, Sue, and so this is a little bit of me saying it publicly, um, but, you know, the heart that you clearly have for seniors, it comes through in everything. You know, I, you know, passion is, in my opinion, is, is a lot in this field. And, you know, on the municipal side, you know, we're, we're contributing about, you know, a fraction of 1% of our annual budget for senior-related services. Um, and that's just, has to do with the needs of the town. What you're able to do with the funds you have allocated is phenomenal. Um, and your ability to look out and see grants and really just have, you know, work with the Council of Aging and, and a lot of their ideas and really kind of execute and have a program that is beneficial to everyone. I mean, Heather Soroka sent me a text message last week after attending an event over there, just talking about just how thrilled and fulfilled she felt afterwards. Um, and, and it was just, it was amazing to hear. And, and it was kind of a random text, but it was really amazing to hear. And I'm, and I can also think of times where I've sat with residents and after sitting with them at a breakfast and talking to them for a while, finding out that they're from Townsend or they're from Leominster or Fitchburg. Because it has become a magnet. You know, the work that the Council of Aging and that you're doing, uh, is, is really making a difference and impacting people's lives. So thank you, thank you so much for that.
Thank you. And I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the staff, too. Um, we have three kitchen staff. There's Elsa, Sandy, um, Anne, and the office staff. And that's Amanda and Pauline and the van drivers. Uh, Jim McQuiggin, who keeps trying to retire. We keep throwing him back in again. And his wife thanks us. I know you're watching, Jim. Uh, we have a new driver, Kimber, and Dave Gallagher also. And they're great and the people love them. And the staff is what makes that place work, so.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Thank you. If, if there's ever anything we can do to be more supportive, please let us know.
Thank you.
All right, I know we're a little behind schedule here. Um, but the next is a rather routine toll booth request um, coming from the Lions Club, uh, looking for use of the Ritter parking lot and, uh, on September the 24th. So please come forward, state your name and why you're here tonight.
Hi, Karine Scout, 8:30 Mass Ave, and also President of the Lunenburg Lions Club. And I am here on behalf of Lions tonight. Um, so we have put in a permit request for hosting the boot drive on September 24th. It's a Saturday from 8:00 to noon out here in the center of town, along with having, um, our trailer parked, uh, behind Ritter on School Street to not only collect money, but to collect perish, non-perishables if people want to do that in lieu of funds. Um, so I put the permit in with Elaine and, um, the town manager. And I have heard back from the DPW Director and the police officer that they have no objections as long as we, of course, follow the rules of signage and placement of cones and vests and so forth. Um, we have done this in the past. It's been a few years, but we have experience. We have all of those supplies and needs. So I'm just basically here to see if you guys will grant us our wish.
So again, this is Saturday, so September the 24th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 noon.
Yes.
All right, uh, any comments from the town manager on this?
Nope, everything's in order.
Okay, to the board, any questions, comments? If not, is there a motion to approve?
I would make a motion to approve the request for a toll booth fundraiser and the use of the Ritter, uh, parking lot by the Turkey Hill Lions Club on September 24th from 8:00 to noon.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, those opposed, no. The ayes have it, so this is approved.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Keep up all the good work.
All right. So before we go to our next appointment, I'm just going to comment to Mr. Paul Visconti. You mentioned you're from Shrewsbury. We will not hold it against you if you decide to walk out and head out. So, uh, it's not common that everyone stays to the full meeting. You're welcome to stay, of course.
No, I appreciate that, I'm enjoying it.
All right.
That has me nervous, by the way.
Yeah, yeah. And you see, and you see our personalities a little bit here. Um, so now to our 7:40, we're only one minute late. Uh, 7:40 with Jenny Albertson, uh, who's, will be providing a presentation tonight regarding pollinator habitats. And then I see that she has her team here with us tonight, with her tonight, so that's exciting.
Is that support?
It is. Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. I appreciate this opportunity to, um, talk about what's happening with pollinators, uh, what's happening on this planet. And I'm not nervous at all. So I've been researching and studying this information for a little over 10 years. Um, I started the Lunenburg Community Pollinator Habitat, which these people have taken over and they're doing a really good job. And they're very interested in the environment, um, and how to save these insects that are dying off. Um, I'm a member of the Xerces Society for Invertebrate Conservation. I'm a member of the Massachusetts Pollinator Network, Native Plant Trust, the Wild Seed Project in Maine. Um, I'm a member of Grow Native Massachusetts. They're based in Waltham. And the National Butterfly Association. And through that, I'm a member of the Massachusetts Butterfly Club. So what I want to say is, my message is, uh, we're currently in the greatest global species die-off in recorded history. And we're living in a critical time right now because we can do something about it. We can change it around so the, the planet doesn't collapse. So you probably hear about, um, you hear words like ecosystems and, um, uh, biodiversity and what are all these things? So the ecosystems are geographic areas of organisms and their environment. And then within those ecosystems are, um, is the biodiversity, which is all life that works within that, within the ecosystems, which is the bacteria and the fungi and the animals and plants. And our planet cannot exist without plants. So healthy ecosystems, you're going to have a healthy planet. If for whatever reason, those ecosystems start collapsing, the planet's going to collapse as well. Doug Talamy has, um, I think, three books written now. He's a, a, a doctor of entomology. Um, he's in, at the University of Delaware. In fact, Linda Hilson and I gave, um, the Conservation Commission a copy of Bringing Nature Home a couple of years ago. So they would read it and understand really what's going on and what the message is. So in that Bringing Nature Home book, which has become my Bible, um, he likens what's happening to an airplane flying in the sky that a couple of rivets pop out. This wasn't his analogy, but he quoted it in his book. And, um, then the plane keeps going and a few more pop out. Then all of a sudden, there's eight rivets falling out of one wing. Long story short, they keep falling out, the plane's going to crash. So we have to do something about it. Um, we've already started in Lunenburg, but oh, Lunenburg can do a lot more. Um, we have to get more people involved. Uh, so there's the, the plant pollinator relationship. They really can't live without each other. There are specialist insects and there are generalist insects. Well, generally, the generalists are better off because they'll take what they need from the plants that are around. But the specialists, um, can't. They're going to stick to one plant. So if that insect, um, goes away, what's the word?
Goes extinct?
Yep. The plant's going to, too, because it doesn't have that insect to pollinate it. If the plant goes extinct, you're going to lose the insect. I know there are specialist bees, there are specialist butterflies. so there's something called a Golden Northern Bumblebee that hasn't been seen in Lunenburg for four years. That is not to say that it won't come back, but, you know, it makes you stop and think. the plant, the native plants and pollinators have evolved for thousands and thousands of years. And those insects have evolved, have evolved with the plants that have been here for thousands of years. The native plants, or what we call native plants, are the ones that have been here since, um, before the European settlers arrived. That's the general description. Those are the native plants. Those are the plants that these insects have evolved with. Um, Doug Talamy recommends that 70% of your yards and gardens be planted with native plants. So that doesn't mean you have to tear out all your beautiful alien exotic plants, but just add more native plants to what you already have. If you don't have a yard or a garden, put something in a flower pot and put it on your front step. That'll actually help. It's better than doing nothing. We can't sit here on our computers and not do anything. we have to support our local insects. And we've started, but I think the town can pick up and do a lot more. We can, we can plant on public lands, um, with, with appropriate guidance so we, we know what we're doing. I'd like to have a conversation with Paul. Um, welcome to Lunenburg. I hope he's a, a native plant advocate. Um, you have to plant trees and shrubs. And you want them to be, um, in bloom from early, early spring all the way through late fall. So we still have a lot of time now, um, for the golden rods to come out and the asters, um, and we need them. Uh, and they're beautiful. The native plants are absolutely beautiful. And if you don't want to give up your bright reds and purples, um, you can get those in native plants. But take the whole planting and look at the colors of the insects and the butterflies and the bees and at night, the moths. There are some day-flying moths. But they're very colorful and very beautiful and they're alive. I ask that you don't use herbicides or pesticides or fertilizers because with native plants, you don't need them. Um, and especially in a drought like we're experiencing right now, once a native plant is established after a year or two, you don't have to water... once a native plant is established after a year or two, you don't have to water it. This year I did, okay, but it was, it, it, it was extenuating circumstances this year. But they grew here for years and years and years and years and years, and they've adapted to the climate. And they don't need any fertilization, no poisons that are going to run off into our groundwater. So yeah, very little care. No chemicals. You don't need them. You can create native plant habitat. Or, as I said, just plant a couple of things and pots around to get yourself started. If you want to do something big, you want to create a meadow, start small. And I have a lot of resources that you can check to find out how to do it properly, so you're not disappointed and the insects aren't disappointed. The deep roots of native plants help clean the groundwater, and they protect soil from erosion. They stabilize the soil. So I ask people, if you possibly can, just leave a part of your lawn unmoed and see what happens. See who comes to visit and see what plants grow. I know my friend Robyn spoke with a neighbor who had just a pond, and the grass went right to the pond. And, may I say this publicly?
Yes.
Yes. And she encouraged them not to mow around the pond. And now it's full of asters and plants and golden rods, and it's absolutely beautiful, and there's life there. We have to teach our children, absolutely have to, it's imperative that they continue to carry on a love for the natural world. Get them off the computers as best you can. Bring them to the pollinator habitat, and I will teach them. I'll be happy to do that if you go vacuum my house. I don't, I don't have time to do everything. The late E.O. Wilson is another one of my heroes, and he started a Half Earth Project. And they named him the father of biodiversity. So he knew, you know, what was needed to keep things, you have these meetings in the middle of the night, and I can't remember Anyway, he knew what could help the situation of our planet. And he said if we can keep half of the earth natural, in its natural native state, we can save it. So this Half Earth Project is continuing, of course, without him. But read up about it, support it. Do a lot of reading and research anyway. The Xerces Society, it's X-E-R-C-E-S. That was named after the first butterfly to go extinct in this country. It's xerces.org. It's a wealth of information. Our own Native Plant Trust here, that used to be New England Wildflower Society, their, their website is a wealth of information. What's native to, you know, your area, et cetera. But try to do something. I know, I know, you know, you're getting ready to, for the kids to go back to school, and you can't really go out and buy plants now, but we're going to have, at the Habitat, date to be announced in October, a winter seed sowing project. We're going to supply the seed and the milk jugs. And basically, what you do is you put dirt and the seed in the milk jug. You put it outside for the winter, and it's a little greenhouse. Then in the spring, you lift off the top as it, as the plants start germinating. So during the warm spring days, you leave the top off. The seedlings will start growing. You close it up at night when it's cold. Anyway, we're going to, we're going to explain to people how to do that, so you can get a whole lot of plants out of that for very little money. But please do something. Start small, read, research, think about what's happening. I would love to share all the information that I have. And what we can do as a town, we have one pollinator habitat. We can make more. Neighbors can connect with neighbors to make pollinator corridors, but the native plants is imperative. Now, we do have, at this time of year, we have zinnias and Mexican sunflowers. Of course, those aren't native, but they're really good pollen and nectar sources for the late-season insects. How's my time?
You're good. Can you talk to us a little bit about monarch butterflies and their life cycle, why New England's so important to their life cycle, and then also just a little bit more about the pollinator habitat that you've worked to help build at, on Hollis Street?
Yeah, well, these women are hooked. Kathy, Robyn, Linda, Pam, Christina, they've done everything. And if you learn about it, you realize how serious it is and how important it is, because we carry water in milk jugs over a, a two-acre field to water. And it's, it's not easy, you know, but they keep at it in the, in the heat. Anyway, yeah, monarch butterflies were recently put on a red list for endangered species, but that's not the federal endangered species list. I don't know if you know that. I'll try. Wait a minute. And I have the name of the organization. The International Union for Conservation of Nature has put monarch butterflies on their red list. And that's because the eastern has decreased by 90% in the last 40 years. Now, these things were around when the dinosaurs were here, and now they're, they're just, the numbers are dwindling. And it's because of big agriculture. Monarchs only lay their eggs on milkweed. Milkweed's the only plant that monarch caterpillars eat. Now, we, in Lunenburg, we have eight native species of milkweed that we can use. The most common ones are the common milkweed that spreads, and you see it in the fields. That's the one they use the most. But if you don't have a field to plant milkweed in, you can get, God, how many times have I said, uh, you can get swamp milkweed, and which, it's called swamp milkweed or rose milkweed. It turns into this beautiful two or three-foot plant with beautiful flowers. And it doesn't spread. It's, it stays in a garden where you put it, and it attracts a number of insect species. There's, there's, these, the milkweeds are all Asclepius. Ooh. If you're going to buy plants or seeds, make sure you know the botanical name, because you could end up with, if you go and you ask for milkweed, somebody might give you a tropical milkweed plant, which would be a terrible thing to plant in Massachusetts. So you want to know Asclepius what. So the common milkweed is Syriaca. The swamp milkweed is Encana. And the, the butterfly weed or butterfly milkweed, it's bright orange, and it likes very dry conditions, full sun. And that's Asclepius tuberosa. And that's a fantastic plant. So, okay, monarch butterflies. There's a western population of monarchs that overwinter in California. And then in the summertime, they go to Oregon and Washington. I don't know, Mexico, I'm not sure. But they stay west of the Rocky Mountains. The eastern monarchs that we, that we have overwinter in Mexico in the Oya Mel Fir Forest, and then they go to Texas and mate, lay eggs, and die, and proceed north and east to here. So they live about a month, give or take, from egg to expiration. And so that first generation in Texas, those butterflies then move north and east, have another generation of, et cetera. When they get here, their third or fourth generation. From here, in the fall, they just know that they're, they're supposed to stop laying eggs. And the direction of the sun and the magnetism of the earth sends them to fly to Mexico from Massachusetts. Then they overwinter in Mexico. So that final generation of, of monarch butterflies lives between six and eight months, which is crazy. Who thought that up? It's fascinating. And kids should know that. There's also another group of monarch butterflies that pretty much stay in Florida all the time. They use the tropical milkweed. Is that what you wanted to hear?
Yeah, I think when you had shared that with me, I was really, like, wowed by that.
Yeah, like wow.
That the fourth generation is what's here and what helps the, helps the life cycle continue, and that if we're experiencing a 90% drop.
Yeah, I think, I think painted lady butterflies migrate as well, but nothing like the monarchs. So, you know, in the last 40 years, what happened? We've destroyed all the milkweed. So they don't have anything to lay their eggs on. The, the, the corn belt was like the big breeding place. And now that's all GMO corn and soybeans. Where's the milkweed that used to be there? It's all, it's all pesticide-ed out. Herbicides, it's gone. So the last thing I want to say is, we didn't inherit the planet from our ancestors. We've borrowed it from our children. I think we have to do something to make it a pleasant place to live.
Well, Jenny, thank you so much for coming out tonight. And, you know, I had the opportunity, as I mentioned to the board, to meet with you at a residence house. And I, I heard your presentation, your kind of call to action. And I was personally very moved by it. And I know that many people at home are hearing this, and they're probably really surprised. And I think you've given some really good ideas for what, for what others can do as a, as, you know, individually, to help out with this. I'm going to give the board the option to ask you any questions on this, and then I'll reserve my comments. Julian.
I was part of the Conservation Commission.
Right, I remember.
When you gave a talk a few years ago. And one of the things I really loved is you talked about ways to make, you know, turn portions of your yard into lower maintenance, because, you know, replacing lawn with, with, you know, a metal mix or something like that. I, I don't know if you can speak to that a little bit, because, you know, personally, I hate mowing my, mowing my lawn. I, I like if it's much smaller and there's, so, you know, I've gotten bare patches, and I've, like, thrown clover out and stuff like that. And it's great, because you don't have to mow it as frequently. It stays pretty low and flowers, and it's pretty. So I, I don't know if you can talk to it.
There are native ground covers that you can use as well, besides clover. I know the bees love it. But, you know, if you can stay native, do that. Yeah, they've started a thing either this year or the year before called No Mow May. And they're asking people to refrain from mowing until the pollinators have had a chance to leave their overwintering spot. Just like in the fall, they're saying, leave the leaves, because all kinds of things are overwintering in those leaves. And if you rake them up and put them in the bag and send them to the landfill, you're killing them. You know, snow blow, snow blowers, leaf blowers. I have a real problem with leaf blowers. Try to be aware of, of what's going on in the land or on the land. But yeah, just try leaving a part. In fact, my backyard, we used to mow, 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 mow. And now we just mow paths, and we leave things growing. I had a lot of white wood aster come up and golden rods. Couple of different kind of golden rods. And it's beautiful. And, I mean, a lot of people want to keep some lawn because they use it. They play ball, they have picnics. Great, do it. But if you can just shrink it a little bit and leave a little, a little part native, and then when you see what's happening there, you think, oh, this isn't so bad.
And you recommend every, I think you mentioned to me previously, every three years to kind of cut that metal-ish portion down?
Okay, so, yeah. And that's for the overwintering insects as well. Butterfly-wise, some of them overwinter as adults, believe it or not, in cracks of trees. And some of them overwinter as eggs right on the host plant, and some as larvae. And those, those little caterpillars overwinter in the leaf litter right below the, the plant. Why am I saying this? Oh, a third, yes. So you're, you're mowing a third just to give a break to some of these overwintering, overwintering critters. We're doing that at the pollinator habitat now. And some plants that we know are host plants for certain species, we don't mow those at all. So, you, you know, you have to know what you're doing. But you could find the answers to all your questions, I promise. Yeah, host plants, nectar plants. Butterflies all need host plants to lay their eggs on, and they're very specific. For example, I said the monarch will only lay on milkweed plants, different kinds of milkweeds. The spice bush swallowtail butterfly will only lay its eggs on spice bush shrubs and sassafras trees. So if you are deciding you want to put in a, a pollinator garden, you want to make sure you have the host plants for the caterpillars to eat, and the nectar plants for the adults.
Yeah, I just pulled something up because I heard this program three weeks ago today, as a matter of fact. I thought it was more like five weeks ago, but it was three weeks ago. On WBUR, on, on point, three weeks ago today, there was a program, or an hour on how to save the endangered monarch butterfly. And so you can pull that up just to the public if you go to wbur.org and search monarch butterfly. And then you can just listen to this and passively get a ton of information.
And that's, that's a good point. One of the guests on that program is Dr. Chip Taylor, who is the head of Monarch Watch. You can check out Monarch Watch. They do lots and lots. I think they give, give away milkweed seed and plants, and have all kinds of promotional things for monarchs. And they, they help you create monarch waste stations. But Dr. Taylor is one of the people who said- But Dr. Taylor is one of the people who said, "The monarch butterfly does not need to be on the endangered species list because it hasn't hit that lowest point yet." Now, I'm thinking they're pretty close, but this is his business. And I think he's probably been trying to keep the monarch off the federal endangered species list, because I know there's a lot of rules that go along with that. But that was a great program.
And just more broadly, I want to say, you should be listening to On Point anyway, just in general, not just for this program.
I want to thank you. What a great information, such a fascinating subject, such an important subject.
Yeah.
I was... We're lucky, because on my property, we grow, plant a lot of milkweed. Initially, because we use it, the seed pods, we use it to decorate our Christmas tree as faux snow. So we use it to blow on the Christmas tree.
Oh, for heaven's sakes.
We encourage people to do that, by the way. It makes quite the mess when you take away the Christmas tree, but it looks great. And anyway, because of that, we have, at my property, we actually have lots of butterflies, monarchs among them. But that was just... We didn't do it for that reason, although it's nice to know that we found out later. Not, I'm not just finding out tonight, but I found out earlier. But I think it's really a good idea for everybody to be doing that. I never understood, as a child, as Mr. Dwyer said, not wanting to mow a lawn. When I had to mow my parents' lawn in Long Island, I never understood the idea of a lawn, for the most part, anyway. And I always thought that places to go that had more wild gardens, or wildflower gardens... And then when you see places like Garden in the Woods, things like that are just beautiful. I always thought those were a better use of the properties, anyway. So I encourage people to really... I just gave a few sources online of where people can get information, but I encourage people to use that. And it is true, bringing back, I mean, the honeybees were thought to be really depleted in numbers as well. And all of those really need to have a comeback. So I think it was an excellent presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you as well, Jenny. You know, one of the things... I want to first thank you and the team that you have behind you, because what you're doing is selfless, and it's just, it's... You know, you're seeing beyond yourselves and saying, "Hey, there's something, there's a problem out here in this world, and how can I do something about it?" And I know sometimes it feels overwhelming. I know, sitting on this board, sometimes the task in front of us feels overwhelming. But it really is, you know, small things that we can do. You know, I went home and I shared this with Ezra, and I said, "Hey, we're gonna, I'm thinking that we should do this." And he was all for it. And yep, we're giving up the hill, because we have about a third of an acre on a hill. And so he's committing, we're committing the hill to be a pollinator garden at my own house.
Fabulous.
So, which we're all excited about, mostly for not mowing. But, you know, I want to translate a lot of this into policy, into how we go forward from here. And I want to acknowledge Mr. Dwyer for his help over the weekend on this. But I will be, as I said to you, I'm going to work with you and to the board. My intention here is to work with a couple different groups to kind of finalize some of these ideas into a more draftable form before I come to the board for more comments, and then before we give it out to department heads for more comments and feedback. But really, the goal is that, you know, we need to address this. And I think that some of the ideas that I already have and committed to paper, a little extensive here, is, you know, plant identification is critical to conservation. You know, being able to understand what you're looking at is step one of biodiversity preservation. And one thing I want to explore with the board is identifying, you know, the trees and the shrubs that we have here in the center of town. All the people who walk by them every single day, who jog by them, the kids who go by them, that if we can enhance that awareness of what it is that they're looking at. And if people just have a better knowledge base, I think that is something that would be critical. Working to create requirements about native vegetation on town property. I know that you had mentioned that 70% is a good threshold, but working in that direction. Figure out how we can establish pollinator gardens. And I want to work with you over the coming month or two to do that. Banning pesticides. Now, there are going to have to be exceptions to that, because we do have waterways that unfortunately do need to get treated sometimes. We also have to be mindful of hornets and wasps that may be on buildings. So there may be, you know, exceptions to that, but I think as a general rule, that we should incorporate some better land management practices that utilize organic methods and practices. Looking at our energy and resource management processes of town. The Paris Accords committed to be 100% energy renewable sources by the year 2030. I think the town can adopt a similar policy. Coordinating an annual town cleanup. So that way, you know, every year, we're looking at how we can do this on a townwide basis. Looking at establishing a volunteer services coordinator to help us reach out to some of these outside groups to help bring in more volunteers. Establishing community gardens on town property. So that way, we can have a way for people who maybe don't have yards and lawns to do that. And then the last thing being, you know, that we have a lot of... Over the weekend, I toured our property. I toured some of our larger parcels. We have 111 acres almost right off the center of town here, the Old Woodra Farm. And we have 66 acres on West Street, and we have 40 acres over on Pleasant Street. And I walked around those properties over the weekend, and I think there's a lot of opportunity. What's interesting is that a lot of them are being maintained. And I think we just need to formalize some of those licenses and agreements to help maintain better fields and metals with the farming community that we have in town. A lot of work to be done, but this is some really big stuff. And so I look forward to working with you and your team over the coming months. And again, coming back, I can't say all of this is going to get through the board, but I certainly want to make sure that I'm presenting the best case possible to my colleagues here on the select board, so that way we can take these ideas, build upon them, and see what we can do to help this effort as a community. So I want to thank you, because this was inspired in large part by my meeting with you. So I want to thank you for you sharing, you know, your passion with us as a community.
Thank you, Michael Gray.
And to the town manager, Amy.
No, thank you for the presentation. It was really thorough and interesting and new information that I think is fairly going to be helpful to the public as well.
Let me just add that the town pollinator habitat is at 123 Hollis Road. Feel free to go there, stay on the paths, because you don't know what's happening amongst the plantings. But go visit. And I'm available for questions or, you know, like, between 10:00 AM and 4:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you.
To the town manager's report.
I don't have a report, official report, in the Google Drive for you tonight, but I'll do the vacancy listings, as well as a couple just announcements that would be in my report. For committees, boards, and commissions, there are two vacancies in the Finance Committee, two associate vacancies on the Green Communities Committee, one vacancy on the Historical Commission, one vacancy on the Planning Board that's jointly appointed by the Planning Board and the Board of Selectmen until the next annual town election, and one associate vacancy on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and one vacancy on the Conservation Commission as well. Anyone interested in serving on any of these boards or committees can find the application forms on the town website, complete it, and return it to the Select Board's office. And if you have any questions on the roles and responsibilities, you can contact our office as well at 978-582-4130, extension 144. Current employment opportunities for the town. We are currently advertising for three heavy equipment operator positions, which are full-time benefitted positions, which will... We are in the works of probably filling two of those positions shortly. The library assistant position is a part-time, non-benefited position, which also looks like it will be filled shortly. The meal site manager, which is a part-time, non-benefited position, the Council on Aging Director said that position will be filled shortly as well. Police officer, which is a full-time benefited position, production technician for public access, is a part-time benefited position. Van driver for the Eagle House Council on Aging, part-time, non-benefited position, and public access videographer positions, which are part-time, non-benefited positions. And information on these positions can be found on the town website as well, under employment opportunities. Just some announcements. Last report I gave, one of the topics was funding for 30 School Street for the hazardous materials, bateman, and demolition. So that was included in the economic development bill, but it was not passed because the timing, as it came up, that whole fiscal uncertainty related to the 1986 tax law that was going to be triggered came into play. So they delayed passing that economic development bill. It's not to say that it may not be passed, but right now, that's definitely on hold. So our legislators will keep us updated if it does move forward.
Was that something that was announced to us already?
No.
Okay.
No, they told us it was in the bill.
Okay.
But we were waiting the finalization at the end of the session. Pond View Commons did file their application this week, but their filing fee was deficient. So that will make it an incomplete application, so they're going to be notified of that. So that is forthcoming. And the Planning Board approved the Uma Flowers application at their meeting last night. So...
Excellent. Any questions for the town manager? I have one. Do we have any update on the Howard Street Development Project?
That's what you said.
That was Pond View Commons.
Oh, that's the Pond View, got it. Okay, thanks. I need to commit that to memory.
Yeah.
Pond View.
Pond View.
Is there a view of a pond up there?
Not that I recall. It seemed like a desert.
Someone once told me they named things after what they remove. So it's called Oak Street because they removed all the oak trees. So it's Pond View because they removed a pond, I'm sure, so...
Filled it in. Okay. Any other questions for the town manager? Fiscal year 22 financial report, the printed and bound ones. When do those usually come out? So for example, like, we have a habit of, I think, doing big binders, financial reports. We have one for fiscal year 21, years prior. I'll talk to you offline about it. Your look is like, "What are you talking about?" I'll talk to you offline. I'll give you the one I have in the car.
Okay.
Okay. I'll pick it up another time. I want to also just mention, Heather mentioned the vacancies. I was invited this past, over the weekend, I was invited to attend the farmer's market on Sunday and to kind of man a table with Mr. Allison, to invite, to talk, to be willing to talk to people about volunteering for town government. He had mentioned to me over the weekend that a lot of questions come up at the farmer's markets on Sundays. And so I did join him on Sunday, and we did get one person to sign up to volunteer to help out, and I sent that over to you and Elaine. So I did not commit to this Sunday, but I did tell him that I would come another time to sit. And it was really, I will say, most of the... It was almost like Meet a Selectman Day. I mean, not... I think I was there just to kind of tell the kids where to put the thumbtack on the map. But it was a lot of conversations just about town government. And he had mentioned that it comes up often, and that's why he asked if I wouldn't mind being there. And I was happy to do it. So if there will be another opportunity to do that, I'll let the board know. I know we all like that kind of stuff.
Mr. Chair, given that set of facts there, would it be perhaps beneficial to have some kind of a table there or something, an information table at the farmer's markets in general about volunteering in the town?
Of course. Do we want to man this?
Well, that's another question. I could...
Lou just volunteered the table. The rest is entirely else.
I'll donate the table. No, I would certainly be willing to participate in that. I mean, not on a weekly basis, but I would certainly contribute time to it.
All right. I'll reach out to Mr. Allison on that. And through the office, we'll send out information on that.
Yeah, I mean, seeing as we're looking for ways to get the word out about encouraging volunteerism, and there are people going there, asking questions, it seems logical to have a touch point there.
It was really interesting, I will say, that the amount of people that are coming in from other communities. Because, you know, Matt, after talking to someone for a while about something, the last question I asked is, "Are you from Lunenburg?" And I'm like, "No." And of course, I was like 10 minutes talking about how Lunenburg functions, and he was like, "Maybe you should ask that first." But I started asking that, and it was really impressive, the pull. And I know that Sunday was a little bit of a lower turnout, but it was a pretty broad pool that we have coming to those markets, so it was pretty interesting. Thank you, Heather, for the town manager report, as always. So next on our agenda tonight, old business, discussing the 300th Anniversary Committee Charge. So members were asked if they were willing or interested to submit a draft of potential anniversary charges. I think that Mr. Franco went ahead and submitted one, and I'm definitely going to use his draft. I think it was really good. So if we want to just... I'm not going to...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just to clarify, we asked, after we discussed it last week, which one of us... We didn't ask everybody. We asked who would volunteer. Mr. Franco was very gracious to volunteer, and I think that his result is an excellent job. So it wasn't like we were waiting for one from everybody.
Thank you. You see, I volunteer.
So if we want to just review this draft, Mr. Franco, would you like to present this to the board?
Sure. I just want to just preface this by saying, I mean, this is a first crack at this. This is obviously subject to editing. And just in general, like Ben Franklin said, "I'm not accustomed to writing documents subject to editing by others." But in this instance, I have to be. Because this is going to be a board document. So I will share what we have so far. And what I did was I read all of the examples that were provided from various towns. And, you know, collectively, I think that... It's funny, because each of them in a vacuum seemed complete until you read another one and said, "Well, you know, that other one should have had something like this as well." So what I tried to do is pull elements from all five of them and synthesize it into some manageable document that touches all the points. And here we are, subject to editing, but I'll... You want me to present what we have so far?
Please.
Okay. So Lunenburg 300th Anniversary Committee. Four words into it, I already have a typo. "The year 2028 will mark the 300th anniversary of the incorporation of the Town of Lunenburg. In order to recognize and celebrate Lunenburg's tricentennial, the Lunenburg Select Board has established the Lunenburg 300th Anniversary Committee..." I think right now, the official name... I don't know if it has an official name, but I think the official name I'm going to suggest should include Lunenburg in it. "...which committee shall develop a celebratory plan, including a timeline, proposed events, publicity plan, volunteer roster, funding requirements, and funding sources. Coordinate with other entities within the town government, including the police, fire department, DPW, Historical Commission, and schools in order to facilitate safety and maximize resident participation. Solicite, evaluate, and generate recommendations as to how the town should manage the commemoration of its tricentennial and the celebration of its rich history. Overseal subcommittees established for specific purposes and supervise and assist these subcommittees in their functions. Recruit, organize, task, and oversee volunteers from among the townspeople in furtherance of the overall celebration and the execution of specific functions of the committee and/or its subcommittees." Now, the next one I was inspired by, there's a lot of history in this town and a lot of very impressive people that came from this town that touched on various aspects of human endeavor in very important ways. So this is where this one's coming from. "Plan, coordinate, manage, sponsor, and implement commemorative events, including but not limited to recreational and educational activities and social-cultural gatherings intended to enhance among the townspeople awareness and appreciation for the history of the town and the contributions that its residents have made locally and nationally to various fields of human endeavor, including, for example, architecture, arts, civil rights, government, engineering, environmental protection, industry, invention, law, literature, medicine, the military, politics, public policy, public safety, and science." Next, "Encourage through effective communication and outreach maximum inclusion attendance and participation by the townspeople in events and celebrations." And finally, "Partner with local businesses and community organizations to develop events that appeal to all ages and encourage maximum participation by town residents." So with that, I will say, I do have some notes at the end of it, too, just things we may wish to discuss. There may be some redundancy in here, and that's a reflection... be some redundancy in here, and that's a reflection of maybe where I pulled elements from, too, and I didn't quite totally synthesize them yet, but I wanted to have them in there as discussion points. Secondly, I wonder if this is, maybe it's fine in as far as it goes, but maybe it needs more, maybe it needs, you know, information or as to the, or language as to the composition of the committee. I did notice that in at least one example, or two examples, actually, Wheatley and Barry, where they, you know, indicated in this document how, what would be the composition, composition of the committee, how many members and all of that. And do we also want to include in for specific or explicit, not just implicit? I mean, it's implicit that we're making these appointments to this committee, but do we want explicit information, language to that effect? We are establishing a committee, but we didn't say how it's getting populated.
Okay. I, I encourage open dialogue on this topic.
Mr. Chair, first, I want to thank Mr. Franco for putting this draft together, which to me is more than a draft, except for the typo that he noted at the very beginning. I think it stands and captures for, at least from my perspective, captures everything we'd want to include. As a charge, I will note that it is a committee charge. So to the questions that he ended with regarding language of composition and appointment, I think we can do those under separate cover. But the charge of the committee should be this. I think this is exactly the charge. I don't see anything that, to me, was glaringly omitted or any, or any real redundancies in what he's written. I appreciate the work he put into reading through the other ones and basically creating an amalgam that I think is a really good, solid committee charge for Lunenburg's 300th Anniversary. So thank you, Mr. Franco.
Thank you for those assessment.
I concur. I read through it and I, I was impressed with, with what you pulled together. And I didn't have any additional comments.
I, as well, think that Lou, that this is excellent. I do have a couple of comments. On the, the third paragraph starts with coordinate. I know that you're listing other entities which, including, and I know this is not necessarily an exclusive, exclusion to anyone, but as I'm, as I'm looking at Paul, I would add facilities. Because I envision that there will be some work or decorations or things that will happen involving facilities.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, sure. Certainly. Absolutely. Yeah.
And then on, to your question about composition, I think we can do this one of two ways, either have this as a charge and separately, just have a document that identifies how many members, or we can add it to this. What is, what are the board's thoughts on composition? Just how, how this should be comprised?
What was the, if I may, Mr. Chair, through you to the town manager, what was the article that we passed? Did it mention anything about?
The title of the committee.
That's it? Didn't say anything about membership or anything else?
No.
Okay.
No. But typically, our charges do include composition and term.
Okay.
The ones that have been.
Yeah. I would be in favor of a term to expire when the commission's finished, although the committee's finished. Because I think that this is one of those where we don't, it's not beneficial to have a turnover in membership, given, given the mission. So I would be in favor of just until the work is done and that we're not reappointing people to it. And then I think of the composition, I would encourage that we reach out to the cultural council and try to appoint at least two members from the cultural council, because they are mostly an advisory, non-regulatory board. And so I would advise as two members of the cultural council in a, in a composition of seven.
If I could add to that, I have already informally taken it upon myself just to, in a hypothetical way, reach out to two members of the Historical Society, whom I think would also be great for this, because they, they really drill into, as a matter of fact, just two weeks ago, we had a, an author of a book come out, a book on architecture, come out to sort of look at town hall. Were you even aware this was going on, Heather? Because it was kind of, okay. And decide whether it was this, Asher Benjamin is the, is the, is the, I think I have the first name correct, was the architect, you know, in this area that made sort of architecture more accessible to the colonial, or post-colonial, really, America. And because all the books on architecture at the time were sort of the, these European compendiums that, or compendia that, you know, 90% of it was irrelevant, because we weren't building like marble palaces over here and stuff. But just for rough American architecture and buildings like this, and I don't know what the conclusion was. He spent a lot of time here. He suspected that it may have been inspired by, by one of these books, but it certainly wasn't personally designed. Although then the Historical Commission has a receipt, I'm sorry, the Historical Society has a receipt for some kind of consultation by this architect with his signature on it. So that was a pretty neat piece of history there, to see that. We sat out at that picnic table over there in the, in the church lawn over there. And so I just think that they would be a great resource for informing this. I mean, what is this, if it's not a celebration of the town's history and all, and they're a great resource.
And would you say one member or two?
I would, I, I, I mean, I like the idea of two, if we're, but you know, if we're going with a seven member, that could be using up too many slots. I don't know. But maybe, maybe that's not finalized if it's going to be seven or nine or.
Yeah.
I have two particular people in mind, and I'd love if they do it. That's why I'm thinking I'd like there to be two. So.
I think, so, seven might be too small, a committee, for something this large, because they'll need lots of subcommittees. So may need to be larger. And I would hesitate to assign too many people to specific groups that they're from. I'd rather that we open it up and, I mean, we can obviously, we can say in the charge that we give deference to people of these, but we should just open it up to people who are really interested. I remember the 275th was, you know, the committee was from all walks of Lunenburg and all different kinds. They weren't all, you know, committee members of one or another. Some of them were just, you know, highly motivated, highly active community members. So we just want somebody who's going to bring lots of enthusiasm, lots of organization and planning, because we're looking at a, you know, a five-year, five, five and a half year to prepare. So.
All right. So for stepping back from that, so for composition, your feedback is seven might be too small. What, do you remember how big the commission was?
I want to say the other one was, it may have even been 11 or something like that. But I'm not sure.
That in a file.
What?
I have that in a file in my office, but I don't know offhand.
You can look at previous composition and discuss that.
I mean, there are going to be a ton of moving parts in this thing. So, yeah.
Because there's going to be lots of subcommittees. The way the 275th worked is there were lots of events during the year. And I think what they did, I wasn't involved in the planning, but I have a funny feeling that when I spoke to people after the fact, that there were lots of subcommittees dealing with specific timeframe, you know, of during the year. So they would have people per event deal with that. And they didn't want to necessarily, I mean, they want lots of volunteers, sure, but they wanted people from the committee to be involved in these without, without having to rely on more volunteers. They wanted a core group of people who could subcommittee, let's say, five different events, five large events during the year, or four large events during the year.
Got it.
I mean, we should, it should be pretty, it should be fluid. I mean, we really, the thing is, we want to get somebody who is enthusiastic about doing it and let them dictate to us what they need. That's really probably the best scenario. So our framework should be, from my standpoint, should be fairly loose. It can't be undefined, but I mean, it should be fairly loose.
Okay.
So my, our motion at town meeting said, composed of not more than 11 members.
Okay. I thought it was, okay, I thought that the article had it. That's why I asked. Okay. There you go.
Okay.
Yeah. So 11 is, since we passed it, I think we have to go with that.
Yeah. So we can be open-ended on, on the composition, just not to exceed 11?
When we, when we post for people to start applying, which I would recommend we do fairly soon, maybe we start advertising it at special town meeting, you know, between now and then, really hard. But I would say that we're giving, you know, deference to people from cultural councils, from Historical Commission, Historical Society, you know, somebody who's like the alumni, the LHS alumni society, and people have like deep roots into those kind of things.
All right. Our next meeting is in, is in two weeks. And with Heather off on vacation this week, I prefer that we not approve this today. But if possible, Mr. Franco, can you just submit or just a, or update with just those minor revisions?
Yes. And, and where did we land in the end on, okay, so you want treatment in there and of, as to the composition of it, right?
Oh, we've already done the composition.
Yeah.
We could say what we want, I mean, the composition was done in the article that we passed.
Right.
So the, at least the number.
Yeah.
If you want to say what we're giving deference to when people who apply, I guess you could start, you could try to add that.
Yeah. And it sounds like, yeah, some deference is going to Historical Commission, Cultural Council.
Yeah. And, and I think, you know, and 11 will allow enough to do this. I mean, you need people with, that bring different talents to the table, like you need organizational people. People from the Lunenburg Historical Society, for example, might, I'm not saying they're not, I'm just saying they might not necessarily be, you know, organization people and, and, you know, but they're definitely a wealth of knowledge to inform this. So.
I mean, you don't need me here this week to approve this tonight. I mean, this is something, if you approve it tonight, Elaine can, you know, start advertising.
Yeah, I'd prefer not to approve it tonight. Wait for Heather to be back.
Oh, the other Heather.
I was like, why are you asking that? Like, yeah, I know we can pass this latter bit.
The other Heather.
The other Heather.
Yeah. When you said Heather on vacation, I was like, she doesn't look checked out to me.
All right. Are there any other comments or feedback on this? Lou, you did a really good job.
Oh, thank you.
I think the other members did a better job stressing that than I have, but I think you did a really good job putting this together.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
All right. We're on to current business. 265 Pleasant, Pleasant Street, Solar NG. Payment in lieu of taxes. This is a pilot agreement with Nugent.
Yes. So this solar field was constructed around 2014, went online around 2015. Nugent has approached our previous assessing office, but through the private consultant we had, RRG, just due to change of turnover in that office over the years, they were seeking a pilot. And we've finally come to what we agree is a fair terms of the pilot. And I'll explain the depreciation schedule. So we started, the starting valuation was based on a number that their first personal property tax bill was, had that value. And they agreed that was a fair value, given a depreciation schedule of 5% each year. And with bottomed out at 80% depreciated valuation. So that would happen around 2030. The, what is indicated in the chart that the board has, shows the personal property tax amounts, if it was based on our tax rate, each of those years up until currently fiscal '22. And going on Nugent personal property amount, shows the amounts that they paid for the last eight years. And then equalizing those and with a 2.5% escalator on top of that each year for a total value of $237,654. So I'm asking the board to both sign the pilot agreement. This will also, there's two pending ATB cases that the board would ask to also sign the settlement agreement that our town council prepared, and that they would then withdraw the ATB cases they have.
All right. And so for the folks at home who are probably wondering why we're entering into a pilot agreement, for a solar field that's been in place for seven years, I think the summarized version, summarized version of why now has to do with how we assign taxes due to property owners. And, and I'm speaking mostly to the people at home and people who are watching us. So this has to do more, most with how we assign taxes on an annual basis. And, and we believe that Nugent has a valid case that we may be, without accounting for depreciation, there's a problem. And so what the pilot agreement I think will allow us to do is, is maintain a stable amount of tax income over a set period of time that's aligned with agreements that many communities have with solar farms, including ourselves. And that is fair and equitable, and that will also resolve us from going to court about unfair.
What they perceive as, yeah.
Yeah. What they perceive as to be unfair assessments. Okay. I don't have any questions on this at all. Does the board have any questions, comments?
My only comment is, this is what we discussed with town council. It seems like a, a fair and equitable solution to the issue, and I am in favor of it.
I concur with Member Alonso's comments.
Okay.
Same. Same.
Same. So with that, let's see, what, what motions do we need? We need a motion for settlement agreement, and then we need a motion for pilot. Is that correct?
I would do that motion simultaneously, because they're linked together without the pilot, without the settlement agreement. The pilot and vice versa.
All right. So the motion then would be for a, is there a motion to approve the settlement agreement and the pilot agreement as presented?
I will make a motion to approve the Lunenburg Nugent Pilot Agreement as presented and the settlement agreement with the ATB litigation also as presented.
Second.
Any additional discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion passes. Do we need to sign this this evening?
Yes. There's two copies of each here, because one was through DocuSign. I just wanted to make sure.
So two copies of the agreement.
So this, the settlement, the chair would sign, and the pilot, there's lines for all the board members.
Okay. Am I doing the same thing? I'll do that, honestly. All right. Signatures on this one are page 10. All right. Next on the agenda this evening, is there anything else on this?
No. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is a discussion on 30 School Street and the plan ahead. So where we left off on this is, at the end of town meeting, we put forward a proposal with regard to 30 School Street to demolish the building and to begin the process of design development for a park. That did not pass town meeting. What did pass was a, rather, the article was amended on the floor of town meeting to only authorize the approval of the demolition of the building and plans necessary for that demolition. So discussion tonight on what do we suggest, this is an initial conversation. I know we don't have a full board, just kind of what we need to do to start moving on a plan ahead. I don't think we need to engage in, we can go as, as in-depth as the board so desires. But I think my expectation is that we just kind of work through, what do we do next? And this is an open discussion.
So I, I'll start. Initially, after that amendment, I think we put a lot of time and effort into the design of what would happen after the demolition of 30 School Street. I think the design was well received by the surveys done in town and by the board. I think the design was well received by the surveys done in town and by the board. And I think personally, I think it would be appropriate to bring it up as a separate line item, a separate article, I meant, uh, to look into the design of that. But I also don't know, uh, on the municipal building design committee, what they're looking at and where they are. So maybe that would be helpful to know as well. So that might influence it. But my initial, my initial feeling is that we should propose the, the next step in the design plan that, that Ray Dunnetts, uh, landscape architect did for us to see what the final, you know, building design and building cost would be of, of, uh, you know, creating his vision and our shared vision on that location.
Okay. Any other ideas?
Well, my feeling from town meeting was that there wasn't a huge appetite to undertake, uh, you know, several million dollar, uh, park project on that property. So moving forward, if we're looking at it in a more frugal manner, uh, I would think that using that land as, or just, you know, creating maybe a, a, uh, meadow or something like that in town, you know, uh, you know, that's low maintenance, um, uh, but can still be enjoyed, but for, for minimal dollars. So, and that will just hold that property, um, until another use comes along later on. If the, you know, municipal building design committee, uh, targets that property for future development.
I haven't given up on plugging the park idea yet. So, uh, I, I, at this juncture, I'm more inclined to agree with Mr. Alonso, but I think the very next step is, um, design of dem, or like the demolition plan, right? So which we, we, we got.
That he's working on.
So, yeah, it's being worked on. So, uh, I guess one step at a time and, uh, it might be people, easier for people to imagine what can be done with that space once the building is gone and, you know.
I'm.
I just wanted to add, one of the things that we may want to do is, I, I, well, I'll announce here is like, if you, people who are listening to this, uh, live now on cable TV or in the, in the YouTube recording of it, if you have ideas about how you would like to see, it's, this is a town project, it's a town property. If you have ideas about what you would like to see with that property, then please let us know.
I think, I thank you for that, Mr. Alonso. Um, I'm, I'm, I'm coming around, but I'm, I'm right now a little more aligned, uh, with Mr. Dwyer on this one. I think that the, after seeing the Marshall Park plan, and I think, I haven't thought this thought through, so bear with me here as I say this. After seeing the Marshall Park plan, I understand the wow factor there. That that's going to really wow parents. I think that's going to really hit a lot of a cross-section, multi-generational section of the community, uh, especially parents. And I think that when you look at like, when are people the most passionate about a cause? It's usually something involving children. Um, and I think that that project is, is going to, is, it will provide walking areas. I think, I think that product provides a lot of the things that we were looking for here, minus the natural amphitheater and home for, um, the music organization. After hearing the, you know, the vote at town meeting was close, but, you know, we need overwhelming support for things in order for anything to happen. And I, you know, after digesting a little bit more, I think that we came up with a really good plan for how to use town property. I think in context, I, I don't, I don't think that there's a way to move forward with Marshall Park, with the building plan, with all the things that are on our plate. I don't think that we're going to give people enough value there to justify them voting for it. Not at the tune of three or four, three million dollars. I think if we were talking about a hundred million, one million dollar, one point five million dollars, I think that that's an easier number for people to digest, but at three million, which is a fair number, in my opinion, I think it's, I think that's going to be really hard when you're selling something down the street for, so that would be the town investing seven million dollars in the parks in the center of town while not resolving, you know, and I could already hear the complaints, while not resolving our park situation at large in terms of, granted, I'm not, I know everything I say is kind of hawked a little bit. I'm not saying anything negative about the park commissioners, but I, you know, there's a lot of focus that they've done on Marshall Park. There's a lot of zeal that they have. Um, and I think that, that there's a lot of people in Wellam area who say, what about sidewalks? What about us having a bigger park? And I think even down on Reservoir Road, I know that the park commissioners have identified that they're going to be looking at other parks. So I see more value in putting parks around town rather than focusing that money and energy in the center of town. So it seems that maybe, you know, I, I, we heard something tonight from Jenny that I think was great ideas, which is what if we do minimal site development there? Minimal. We demolish the building, minimal site development and create a pollinator habitat and community garden. That, that is minimal cost. We already have water coming to the site. So if part of the demolition is we leave so that way there's a pump, a source of water, um, that's there. I think we, it, it preserves the land for a period of time until we have a better plan.
Just two quick points. My, my first is, but ancient Roman slash Grecian amphitheater. That's point number one.
I'm with you.
Point, one, number two is, uh, I agree that when I, I'll concede, when I saw the Marshall Park plan, it kind of sucked some of the wind out of the sails of this project. And that's a testament to how great that Marshall Park plan really is, you know, in my, in my view. So, um, you know, this is all discussion, right?
Yeah.
I mean, um, you know, so, so while I have an inclination, I, doesn't mean I won't find myself going fully on board with that idea, which you're, you and Mr. Dwyer are suggesting. So just, just a lot to, you know, linger in.
It sounds like we need a fifth member here.
No, I mean, it's a discussion, it's not a vote, right?
No, no, it is. It's a discussion, not a vote.
I, I don't see the two, the two sites. I mean, there's, there, there was some overlap, but they, they serve different purposes and they serve different reasons and they serve different constituents. And that's, you know, that's number one. Number two is if we do, you know, the, it, the project that Mr. Dunnetts had put together not only addressed the land, but also the parking lots and everything. So it really extended. If we don't do that, then we're still stuck with the parking, a, a whole road system that's totally unusable and unworkable for anything.
Yeah.
And, you know, that was a large part of the cost was doing that paving and the parking and all of that reconstruction of the road. So that was a good portion of, of that plan that we don't get. And we'd still have unused, you know, broken up pavement there anyway. So, I mean, they do serve different purposes and, and I'm somebody who's fully behind Marshall Park. I mean, I think the addressing of athletic fields and, and the like that have been totally underserviced and under maintained are very clear. And I'm so glad that the parks commission is bringing that forward. So, um, yeah, there's a lot of projects that are looking forward. And the town has got to help us in which ones they want to decide upon doing. But there is, while there's some overlap, there's not a huge overlap. There's no fields at Thirty School Street. It services different reasons and different times. And also, and also one of the things that was important to me there at the time, because we really had our discussions and our different perspectives with the APDC and the Historical Commission, was that I commemorated the building and I, I would hate to see that go by the wayside. Because while I think that the building, demolishing the building was the right decision, not saving it, I think commemorating it is also the right decision. And to just not pay attention to that is, is kind of, uh, going back on our word or certainly from my side, going back on my word about what I thought we would do with the property, at least in some minimum regard.
Yeah, I think that those are great points. Um, I, I think even if that does become sort of some sort of meadow or, or, uh, um, pollinator, uh, field or what have you, that there does have to be that commemoration of the building. I mean, that, that was, I, I view it the same way. You may, you, you, you sort of bargain and create expectations, uh, as part of a basis of a bargain. And, you know, that's, that's something you feel like you have to honor. That said, uh, if, if that could be done, I mean, what may take, is there any way, I mean, we have to talk to parks about this, of course. I mean, they've put together a really nice plan, but the, that, that concert venue concept, I just don't want to see that go away. I mean, is there any way to weave that into the Marshall Park plan somehow? I mean, I agree with you, the character of these parks is different, but.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question, uh, as far as can we weave that in there. I think that, you know, wha, I'm, I'm probably thinking in terms of politics and passions and what, how things pass. And I'm, I'm thinking of Marshall Park and thinking about who, who will be behind that championing it. You know, you have Little League. I mean, you have all the sports teams in town. When we look at the center of town, who are the passionate people who will help push that project to the finish line? I don't know. I mean, and I, and I don't, and I don't mean that in, in like a, in a kind of crass way. I mean that in the, since I, I know who it's not, it's not all the same people who are going to be championing for Marshall Park. Cause it's really not a kid-focused area. Um, so, you know, are we going to get that passion from the senior community who says, we really need this for us if we have viable sidewalks? And, and as I notice on weekends, they walk, a lot of people walk around the schools anyway. But that's now part of kind of their, their natural walking loop. You said you do it to, I, I need to start doing it. All this weight I've put on. You know, I, I don't think that we're going to get the same group we saw here tonight, um, during Jenny's presentation, passionate about a little stretch of pollinator habitat as they would be passionate about a whole field of it or, or community gardens. I can see the passion behind community gardens and pollinator habitat. I see us tapping into the people who live in Wellam area, who live in the multi-story buildings, who don't have yards of their own, that this, this is, becomes an asset, I think, for them. Whereas in the form that we're presenting, and again, my concern is I think we have a really good plan that we worked really hard on, that I think is a really good option. But after, after town meeting, my takeaway is we, I don't think we're going to tap into the passions to get that to pass. Um, and so what can we do that will tap into those passions? And I think we saw some of that, some of that here tonight with the things that our community doesn't offer to people, such as community gardens, which, you know, we're a farming community, even like Watertown offers community gardens to people, you know?
Well, until recently, most people who lived in Lunenburg had yards. So there is only, there's only so many people who have apartments and, you know, in the former Emerald Place. And I can't even, what is it called now?
It's the one down on.
It's like Your Home something, Your Home Lunenburg or it's, I don't, I heard the name, it was.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is. But I mean, and, or Trytown, those are the only people who have apartments that don't have property to garden. So that's why they don't, haven't had need. You go into the more densely populated places and towns inside of one twenty-eight, there gets to be more and more people who don't have, who don't have property to farm. So.
And renters, some of them can't use the land.
While I hear, yeah. So while, while I hear your point about political expediency, I, I also think that, you know, it's up to us or not only this board, but other boards to present leadership of what, what people, you know, what we're offering and what people should be excited about. I can't make things pass town meeting, that's for sure. But if I only did things that I thought would pass town meeting, like a hundred percent, then that would really limit anything that we ever brought up. So, I mean, it's a matter of explaining to people what you're trying to do. And even if you brought it forward one more time and it didn't pass, then it would be like, okay, that's clearly the end of it. But I think there was a lot of energy behind it. And sure, it's not going to be equated to, you know, to everybody who does Little League and all the, all the sports thing, but it's a different group. So I, I can't say with any positive, I, I can say that they'll get the support, no doubt. Whether we can get support for this, we'd have to see because it does cater to a whole different clientele and a whole different sector of our town.
Yeah.
Arrive.
Oh, that's right. Arrive. Arrive Lunenburg.
Good discussion. Um, I don't know that, actually, we're not, we're not going to resolve anything tonight. We're just kicking stuff around. So.
We should get Heather's take. Heather two. I'd like to get Heather one's take though, if she has one.
Yeah. What's your take?
I, I agree. The board, um, and myself and staff, we all spent a lot of time and energy on working with Ray Dunnetts on a plan and taking into consideration, um, different uses, how it would benefit the public in general, moving the farmer's market to a more, a better area for them. More space, um, parking wise, the band concerts, moving them to a location that would be a better access point and safe and hopefully bring in even more people to see the band concerts. So I think both projects could be accommodated. But if there's not the political will of people at town meeting, um, to move forward on both, although we haven't brought the Marshall Park to town meeting. So that's just the sentiment you get from speaking with people at public meetings. So I would hate to see it abandoned because I, I do think it's a valuable property that could, has a lot of use to it and would bring a lot of value to those different organizations and the, the general public as well.
Thank you, Heather.
And, and we know too, I mean, it is two different groups and under revised definitions of age. And we know that when the kids are done with the Little League park, they're ready for the senior park.
Lou, there's like a forty-year gap.
We'll call it the senior park. We call it the adult.
The adult.
The adult activity, activity center.
No, but I mean, also, yeah, I mean, speaking to this, I mean, we, there wa, there wa, there was, and I hope still is momentum behind this. And I think, speaking from my, I mean, I think we have sort of a duty to kind of keep on with it. And then if the people don't want it, I mean, we, we have to deliver at least in a plan or, or, or an offer to put on a, on a, on an article, you know, warrant article. So, um, you know, I, I haven't lost the mojo on this.
I'm glad to hear that. Neither have I.
No, I.
By the way, I, I want to point out that I think that there was some discussion among the park commissioners that we haven't approached them and everything. And this doesn't necessarily have to, this, this project wouldn't necessarily have to be put under their purview. Like, the town could own the property and take care of it. Cause all of it's static. There's nothing dynamic except landscaping, what, what we're talking about. So it doesn't have to be something they're going to effectively do programming for. So it doesn't even have to be on, just because we're calling it a park, doesn't mean it's going under the park commission. We could come up with another word if it makes people feel better. But, you know, that location and what we were looking at and what was finally incorporated into the plan really are more, you know, passive, uh, events there. I mean, and then the occasional like, like the, the farmer's market, which is more active, I guess.
Yeah. Both those major uses, the farmer's market and band concerts, take place on property that's already under the care, custody and control of the SLAB board.
Right.
Yeah.
Not the park.
And maintaining that.
Right. The other thing I did want to add, in my opinion, I would go back to town meeting and review the comments that were made and that, uh, different groups of people and what their concerns were and try to address those concerns if you're going to move it forward to the next town meeting.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
And there's, you know, I, I agree, I agree with something you said, Mr. Alonso. You know, I, I, I do believe that leadership is sometimes, um, you know, telling people that there's a tough pill to swallow, but explaining it thoroughly and why they, why this is what we all have to swallow, so to speak. But I think leadership does require us to not always cater, but to advise and to inform. In this case though, I think it's, you know, my, what I'm struggling with internally is that, you know, the group that would benefit the most from this, um, I think many of them, many are on a fixed income. And, and I just don't see that group voting to increase their taxes, uh, for, for that purpose. And, and, you know, taking, you know, when we look at the, when, as I read the room last year, I think we get the advantage of sitting on the stage and looking at who's voting yes and no. And last, this year was a little bit different because we had the clickers. But as far as who was vocal, it seemed to be people in the parent group, um, that were, that were the most vocally opposed. So it's, it's how do we tap into the different interests in town? And maybe the path ahead is, is two parts. Is to say, is to better, and I wouldn't say better, but to explain why we believe that the vision we put forward initially is the best way to go. And then to present an alternative for a holdover. I think when you do that, the town tends to go for the, you know, least costly option, but I think that that may be worthwhile. Maybe it's a two-prong approach to resolve it. Maybe it's a two-pronged approach to resolve it.
I also think that what your, you know, the committee you sit on in the municipal building design.
Yep.
You know, if, if they come up with, oh yeah, we want to use that for something else, and that just.
Yeah.
That would, that would obviously be completely in conflict with what we're trying to do, and then we'd be in a really bad spot. So, we need to know what that committee is doing, you know, and what they're looking at planning.
I think we'll, we'll be in a, I think we'll be in a better position to advise by mid-October.
Okay.
On that.
Well, when is the board in close?
Well, we're not trying to do this for this fall, are we?
That's a question for the board.
I, I thought, I thought that was the, I mean, I don't, it doesn't matter to me one way or another, but I thought that was the reason why it was on now, is because of special. But if we're not talking about special, then it doesn't matter, we can, we.
Yeah. No, the intent now is, is while we have our prefunding and everything, before we even get to all that capital planning, is to kind of work through some of these things ourselves. But no, I mean, my opinion is, is a special town meeting has a 67% voting threshold, and annual town meeting is a 50% voting threshold for capital appropriations. Am I correct in that?
For any money articles?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, yes, annual town meeting is always better for, for money.
Okay. No, again, it was on here, and I just thought, because of the timing, I thought it was going to be a special town meeting.
Okay.
But I'm fine with waiting till the spring anyway, it doesn't matter. I'm not looking to race this through, because that looks bad if you try to raise things through. But I think if we decide to do it, I think we need to really have outreaches and really start putting together, you know, if we, if this board decides to go forward with it, we need to come up with ways to excite people about it if we choose them.
So, when we came up with the plan last year, and Ray Dunnett developed the plan for, for use of the property, I was, I was enthusiastic as any member on this board. I thought it was a fantastic plan, a fantastic use. But I, I, I think Mr. Jeffries and I share the same, maybe just a little bit of pessimism that for the price tag associated with, with that at time, which is now, after unprecedented inflation, only going to go up. I think we're really going to have to do our homework before we bring it before the town again, because, you know, in the long term, with all, all the other challenges we face in town with projects and, and facilities that will need upkeep and repair and replacement over the next 10 to 15 years, you know, it may be, this may be one of those, those pieces of property where we have to be a little bit more frugal. And, but I think coming to, to going to town meeting with an option, with, with two options for the property that, you know, will let them definitively choose which way to go is, I, I'd be fully supportive of that.
Okay, so, it sounds as if the next step here is, once we have a full board, maybe after we have an update from the municipal building design committee at some point in October, that we can reengage this topic. And I'll just advise Heather when she's back from vacation, kind of how the discussion went, and get some feedback from her. Okay, any other discussion on this before we move to the next agenda topic? All right. Next, we have approval of minutes for July 19th and August 2nd. Enjoy your evening. And you got right to the finish line, too.
And, and you can watch the rest on replay.
All right, approval of minutes for July the 19th and August the 2nd.
They were sent to you via email.
Before a motion is made on that, I, I just want to acknowledge that I had requested for the July 19th minutes, that there be a very detailed and precise accounting of the whole appointment process with regard to Mr. Beardmore on the school committee. I just want to acknowledge the job that Elaine did, she always does a great job on the minutes, but that was a ton of work to recount that the way it was, and I think it was very important because of the nature of that appointment, that there's a recorded explanation as to why that, that was permitted. I want, I, I, as you know, I abstained from that vote, because I didn't want to stand in the way of a unanimous appointment of Mr. Beardmore, because I, I, I think he's great specifically, but I didn't like the concept of having the same person serving even for a short time on the, on the finance committee and the school committee, and I want that decision to have limited precedential effect for the future. And I want, when people look back on that, I want that record the way it is, and so I want to thank Elaine for that. With that, I'll make.
I will, I will say, just as a counter comment, that yes, I would also applaud Elaine for putting together that. I, I do think that, that, I understand Mr. Franco's requirement that we put in for the precedent element of it, but that is not, in my view, and this is not a criticism of, of Ms. Peterson, because she's, that's what she's been asked to do, but that is not what minutes should be like, because that was voluminous for minutes. It was almost a transcript, which is what minutes are exactly not supposed to be. So, I understand that Mr. Franco wanted that captured. I echo his wanting that captured, so we don't start a precedent, but I hope in the future we don't have that kind of minute, because it was really brutal to try to read through.
It was a lot, yeah.
And, and, and doesn't matter, I mean, because it doesn't, the elements that we wanted captured for posterity to not set a precedent could have been captured without capturing the entire one hour or so of the dialogue.
Hour, 10 minutes.
So, I guess she, you know, I mean, by doing what she did, she knew she captured what we wanted, you know, even if, even if there was extra, and I, you know, I, I, I know, I mean, this, we know this is, was truly exceptional circumstance, this is not the way the minutes normally look, so.
I think it's the most conversation about minutes since I've been on this board.
Do you want to weigh in on this subject?
I, I tend to agree with Member Alonso. I, I think minutes should, should be brief and to the point, and people want the details. We have many options for people to go back and, and, and see the, see the meeting on YouTube, you know, immediately coming to mind.
All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes for July the 19th and August the 2nd?
Yeah, with that, I will make the motion to approve the minutes of, we can, we were all here for both, okay, to approve the minutes for both July 19th and August 2nd, 2022, as presented.
Second.
All right, any additional discussion? You know, I was thinking, no, I'm just kidding, all right. All right, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those oppose, no.
I'm going to abstain from this one, no, I'm kidding, I approve, I, I, aye.
The ayes have, and the motion passes, the minutes for July 19th and August 2nd are approved. We don't have any warrants tonight, doesn't look like, am I correct?
No warrants tonight.
All right, does that mean we're going to have to, so typically, typically, since we're, I just want to say this, since we're in the last two weeks of the month, normally this means that we need to come in here next week and sign some warrants. Is that a fair assumption?
Yes, sir, every other week now.
Yeah. Is everyone available, are we going to have any issues with people, with, with fellow members coming in next week to sign warrants?
Shouldn't. Will they be available Tuesday morning?
They're ready.
All right, so I'm asking, just in case you guys are taking vacations, we need to designate Tom Wright to sign on behalf of the board.
Through you, Mr. Chair of the Town Manager, will it be available on Tuesday morning?
Usually, I remember, usually Wednesday afternoon.
Not Tuesday morning, it would be by close of business, usually on Tuesday.
Okay. I'll plan on Tuesday evening, man. Thank you.
But Elaine would, yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to designate anyone to, Tom Wright to sign these, all right, so we should have at least three of us here. Okay, any action items? Committee reports?
I have none.
None.
Finance committee meets this Thursday.
Excellent. I mentioned about the school committee meeting, so I'll mention it again, the school committee is meeting this Wednesday at 6:30, so tomorrow, 6:30 PM via Zoom, to discuss the busing policy. It's a special meeting just on their busing policy. So, I, I do want to thank the school committee for hearing the comments that were made and being willing to reevaluate that. I don't have any additional committee reports. Municipal Building Design Committee meets on Monday. Upcoming meeting, September the 6th, so this is our last meeting in August, next meeting would be after Labor Day, so the next meeting, September 6th, September 13th, and then September 20th, and again, the 20th will be a joint workshop with the finance committee, well, joint meeting, not workshop. Any public comments this evening from the public? Any public comments from the town manager tonight?
None, thank you.
And from the board? All right, it is 9:21, is our motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose, no. The motion passes, we are adjourned to those at home. Thank you for tuning in with us this evening, and we trust that you will have an enjoyable evening, happy Labor Day, and we will see you again in September.